Well, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome our professor Mohammed Atasoy and our professor Ma'abit Al-Jahri. You are welcome to our conversation. I will give the speech to our professor Mohammed Atasoy. He is the chair of this session. You are highly welcome, professor.
Thank you very much, Faisal, for welcoming us. It's good to be here. And wherever you are in the world, have a good day. I cannot just say good morning or afternoon. And we are in the virtual environment. It's an entirely different set of relationships. And today, in this session, we will be looking into some of the issues, mostly methodological issues in Islamic economics. We were hoping to have three speakers, but unfortunately, myself and Professor Ma'abit Al-Jahri will be speaking. It is an amazing conference so far, as I have enjoyed looking at very prominent individuals presenting very exciting topics in relation to heterodox economics, institutional economics, and hence it's very much enlightening. It is particularly important such topical areas are particularly important for Islamic economics researchers, because unfortunately, I feel that our research has been very much squeezed within neoclassical economics. And therefore, expanding our horizon through the emerging areas within the heterodoxy and locating ourselves rather than with the means to neoclassical, but going beyond even the heterodoxy would be an important contribution. An important part of this session, in particular, and the conference, of course, is the dedication to Professor Sabri Orman. And we are one way or another celebrating his life and legacy through this conference, and therefore, conference dedicated, or at least this session is dedicated to his life and legacy. And it is incumbent on us to remember his life and legacy. Unfortunately, perhaps in the very larger Islamic economics and finance circles, perhaps his influence has not been heavily felt, but in particular, in Turkey and in Malaysia, he is very well known. He was born in 1948 in Katteh Adiyaman, in the southeast part of Turkey. And on 12th June 2020 this year, he passed away in Istanbul. And he left an amazing legacy behind him. Those who knows him and his legacy is very much influential in our understanding how we can define and redefine Islamic economics in particular. And therefore, I'm very much grateful to conference organizers to dedicate this conference, in particular, this session for the life and legacy of Professor Sabri Orman. We may he rest in peace and we demonstrate our respect for his contribution to the field in particular. But beyond that, if those of you are not familiar, just to give you a brief understanding, the institutional footprints of Professor Sabri Orman. He started his undergrads in Istanbul University. Then he became a staff member at Marmara University, moved to International Islamic University, Malaysia, then coming back to Marmara University in Istanbul, and then going back to International Institute of Islamic Thought and Civilization, Malaysia. After completing, he moved back to Istanbul with Istanbul Commerce University, including being director of the university. But later, he moved to top bureaucracy in the Central Bank of Turkey. And he completed before his passing away. He was a professor of Islamic economics at the Istanbul Sabat İnsayyâm University. My interactions with Professor Sabri Orman was very much related with research in Islamic economics. The first time I communicated with him, it was in 1999, when we initiated the Ansikavidi of Islamic Economics project under the editorship of Professor Kusht Ahmed and Professor Abdulhamid Brahimi. And we appealed to him to write the certain Islamic economics historical chapters for the Ansikavidi. And of course, successfully, he delivered. And that was my first interaction. Later, I was blessed to share a number of platform with Professor Sabri Orman. The really first one was 2010, when there was another conference to celebrate the life of Professor Sabat İnsayyâm. He chaired the session I was speaking. And then the last, I was with him at the Al-Waraka Publication House. He was an editor for Islamic Economics and I was the editor for Islamic Finance. And throughout the one and one and a half years, it was a great pleasure to work with him as an editor at the Al-Waraka Bank Publication House. May God bless his soul and rest in peace, inshallah. And we shall declare our witness that he was a great individual, an intellectual, a man of wisdom, and importantly, virtue. In terms of his contributions, some of the books are here on the screen. You could see, but interestingly, when I was undergrad student at Istanbul University, I think it was 1984, I managed to buy my first Islamic economics-related books just by the bookshops by the university. It was the economics philosophy of Gazali by Sabri Orman. And that is my trajectory of development as well. That was very much the first book. And that opened the ways for me to move into Islamic economics in particular. But he has written mainly on the philosophical issues, looking at the theoretical issues. And in one of his very latest books is the Gazali, Adala, and Social Justice. Gazali, Justice and Social Justice. Again, he articulated the essential issues related with Islamic economics by focusing on justice and social justice issues. But of course, he was a scholar of interdisciplinary nature. Therefore, when we look at his research and his contribution, the reflection of that interdisciplinary is very much obvious. Rather than analyzing economics as a disembodied reality, by looking at his own background as well, he preferred and essentialized the importance of interdisciplinary research by generating an embedded understanding of what economics should be, which myself as well has been heavily stressing over the years. And therefore, he looked at Iktaat rather than economics as such, how Iktaat, or in English terms, Iktaat is located in historical practices and institutions, but how it is reflected in the society. And his engagement with the conceptual issues again, aimed at looking at the authenticity rather than trying to fit into the existing so-called realities in generating an hybrid understanding of Islamic economics. Therefore, we should celebrate his life in terms of his search for authenticity rather than going into the quick fix of fitting into the existing. And therefore, another book, Islamic Economics and Values, as well as the Modernity, he looked at those tensions, how those tensions have surfaced. I hope such productions, such contributions that has been produced by Professor Sabri Orman can be translated into English so that it can be accessible by the larger audience who has interest in Islamic economics or the history of the economies of the Muslim world and the economic thought. But importantly, of course, in addition to his books, he edited books, he translated books, and he published quite large numbers of articles again within those areas that I have tried to highlight. And importantly, perhaps, we have to celebrate his life for his contribution to the development of the new generation of academics and researchers in the institutional area, as well as him undertaking PhD research permission, but also contributing through different means to liberate the minds from the very much confined understanding of what economics is, but going beyond. And therefore, in addition to his contribution to conceptual issues, theoretical issues in redefining Islamic economics through the classical knowledge, it is important to highlight his contribution to the development of new generation of academics and researchers for which we are very much grateful. In particular, his contention, his focus on the contention between economics of Islam and Islamic economics as a conceptual area is very much important for us to consider in understanding the stand that Islamic economics have taken so far. In addition to the interdisciplinary nature, his focus on looking at and evaluation of what has been developed so far, focusing on the Takwa versus the Fatwa, how the Fatwa institutionalization have unfortunately captured the ground rather than enabling any Islamic economics taking the lead towards Takwa or the Piaget. Again, his focus on substance versus the license. I'm looking at how instrumentalization of Islamic knowledge in Fiqh as well has been terribly instrumentalized to generate licenses by which, of course, the substance has been lost. Again, his essence, his stress on the substance, for instance. And in his book, as well as his contribution in other fields, looking at the distinction between Adala or the relationship between Adala and Ikhsan, how the both complement each other to generate the good society that we are referring to. And these are important topical areas for Islamic economics, in particular, at this conjunction of Islamic finance where heavy financialization is taking place as a consequence of the nature of institutionalization as well as the methodology has taken up in Islamic finance. And therefore, reflecting on such conceptual issues in an interdisciplinary manner is very much important for us. Therefore, we shall remember him, not only an academic, not only an intellectual, but importantly, a man of wisdom and as well a virtuous individual. And that is very much indicated, and I wish it can be translated in one of his own interviews, which was published as part of an edited book by Sakaria University Islamic Finance Program colleagues. I hope that can be translated and published, perhaps, in the journal of the Sakaria University Islamic Economics Department, Islamic Economics and Finance Department Journal. It's an amazing interview in terms of understanding how geography, because he starts in an amazing analysis of the geography where he was born. And strangely enough, when we look at all the contenders of Islamic economics, one way or another, the geography where they were coming dominated their understanding of what Islamic economics is and how solutions can be developed in response to the challenges those societies is taking place. And therefore, he starts his analysis from his village, the Khenech, as part of the Adiyaman, which the name was Turkified later into Adala. His life story is starting from then and his reflection and analysis of that geography. And strangely enough, when we look at the generation, if we look at, for instance, Ahmed Najr, his story in Egypt, again, a small village and trying to find solution to regenerating this amazing story of Midgum. In a similar manner, geography has resulted in Professor Sabri Orman to search for an embedded understanding of the reality as a solution, developing an embedded solution to the challenges of the problems he faced in his geography. But in doing that, most of his contemporaries, unfortunately, in Turkey, opted for very disembodied understanding of knowledge in generating solutions, which unfortunately has not produced real outcomes so far. However, his engagement with authenticity to develop an authentic understanding in an embedded sense is an important reality to find solutions to the problem encountered in the society that he was coming from. Of course, he generated such knowledge, which of course, relevant to the rest of the Muslim world. And therefore, that geography and its analysis as a starting point of his narrative, which made Sabri Orman as Sabri Orman, is an important narrative that we have to look into. As mentioned, in the case of Ahmed Najr as well, as well as Kusht Ahmed and others, is an important story for us to look into. And the new generations has to look into those narratives to understand and locate the Islamic economics discourse rather than in an disembodied understanding of neoclassical understanding, but very much embeddedness in the societies in which we have emerged from. And therefore, without going any further, I shall conclude this session. But of course, the fire that the founding fathers have led, or lead, has given us the opportunity to take their courageous effort to the next stage. And hopefully, generations to come will continue to research on this. And we shall pray to the health as well as the salvation of all those contributed to the discourse and the debate of Islamic economics. And in particular, in this occasion, we shall pay our respect to Professor Sabri Orman. And we shall remain witness to his kindness, wisdom, virtue, and intellectualism. Because we see a lot of intellectuals, but virtue unfortunately is a missing quality in nowadays a realistic environment. Therefore, that has to be celebrated in particular. And we shall continue to pay our respect through academic activities. But in our own private ways, we shall extend our prayers for his salvation in the hereafter as well. And thank you very much, and we shall continue. After this introduction to celebrate the life as well as the legacy of Professor Sabri Orman, as part of the reflections of Islamic economics, as I mentioned, will continue with our session. Unfortunately, it was advertised that we would have three individuals here. But today, Professor Ma'abit Al-Jahri and myself will be conducting the session, which gave us a bit better timing rather than 20 minutes. And we shall start first with Professor Ma'abit Al-Jahri. Professor Jahri is part of this, perhaps, the second generation of Islamic economists. According to some analysis, we are now in the fifth generation. And therefore, Professor Ma'abit Al-Jahri's contribution, in particular, in the initial years, while he was at the Islamic Research and Training Institute at the Islamic Development Bank, is very much important to reflect on the development of Islamic economics. And currently, he is in Ankara, at the Islamic, sorry, at the Ankara Social Science University and continue to contribute to the development of new generation focusing on Islamic economics and finance. And in addition to his own academic contribution, Professor Jahri should be celebrated also. His amazing skillful understanding of Islamic finance. Unlike most of us, such as myself, he is very much skillful in Islamic finance-related areas to the detail. And that is the quality of scholarship that we are missing unfortunately currently. The connection between the theory of Islamic economics and the practice of Islamic finance and how perhaps, theory can contribute to the betterment of Islamic finance. Without going any further, I know Professor Jahri for many years. I consider him one of my teachers. And I'll give the floor to him to discuss about the prospects of analytical Islamic economics in the 21st century in enlightening the new generation. Professor Jahri is all yours. Thank you.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbilalamin. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala ašraful merzalin. Sayyidina Muhammadin wa ala alihi washohbihi ajma'in. Dr. Asutai, as usual, you have been overly kind to your modest colleagues. And I really, I am really happy that we shared this forum with us, with each other, especially that we are also celebrating the life and the intellectual contributions of Dr. Sabri today. So now I am trying in this presentation to incite a revolution, not only in Islamic economics, but also in conventional new classical economics. And not only in that, but also we want to shake up the economic system, which has been generally known as market capitalism. So Islamic economics has been, since the 50s of the last century, has been a textual discipline. And it followed the steps of Fiqh. Obviously, Fiqh was our most important source. And we learned from it the tenants of how to live or how to construct our economic system according to Shariah. But through this process of learning, we also got influenced naturally by the methodology of Fischq. Muslims have spent, or Muslim economists have spent too much time in fighting the methodology issues and in order to distinguish our discipline from that of new classical economics. And I remember some of our colleagues. They, you know, I had one time I had an exchange with him that he has been writing about methodology all of his life. And he was, he has been a talented economist. So I told him, allow me to give you a yes on all of your critiques in methodology and all your points. Now let's move from methodology to economic analysis. Take yes for an answer. So since I started teaching in Qatar and in Malaysia, and then now in Al-Qura and also Istanbul, I have been trying to revive or at least use economic methodology in order to present the issues of Islamic economics. So now today, I'm going to present to you this discipline, analytical Islamic economics. What is it and what do we do? It is, to me, it is the most important part of Islamic economics. And it is the most effective, it should be the most effective, and it will be, inshallah, the most effective way of analyzing Islamic economics. And I will give you two examples of analytical Islamic economics. The first thing, that what I would like to consider as a devastating attack on the theories of interest and the rate of interest. And of course, Muslims can be accused of making too much fuss about the rate of interest. So why is that? Why are we doing that? So there are two, actually, three groups of reasons. One reason is that efficiency are efficiency-related. Now, we all remember, I think the first is not the efficiency-related, it is the religious reasons. That of course, at most, we are applying Islamic economics, working in this field for the pleasure of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So we are not really being materialistic. But at the same time, we ration things after our most important, one of the most important Muslim thinkers, that's Ibn Rushd, who has contributed to the approach, the scientific approach or the approach of rational thinking. And I'm not talking about rationality of new classical economics, but I'm talking about rational thinking. So Islam has a strongly worded prohibition of riba. It puts riba in the third place among sins after atheism and mistreatment of parents. So this is a horrifying transgression. The Quran warns those dealing in riba, we were to be waged on them by God and his messenger, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So this would be considered as a fair warning of severe punishment. So this is the foremost important factor that we are, we are making a lot of fuss on the rate of interest. Now, the second type of the second reason are efficiency-related reasons. And here we go into Islamic economics and analytical Islamic economics in particular. So first, Sam Wilson-Friedman efficiency, inefficiency, that's related to the imposition of a price on money. Of course, the rate of interest is a price imposed on using cash balances. So this was claimed by Sam Wilson and later by Friedman. And the cost of using money in transactions becomes, if the foregone interest earnable on bank time deposits in a conventional financial system. Sam Wilson in 68 and Clower in 69 also called this inefficiency the normative classical dichotomy between private and social cost of holding real balances. So this inefficiency is well recognized in new classical economics. But the interesting about it, that it is recognized in a way that new classics contradicted each other. They did that in a model, which is supposed to be a barter model that should be devoid with money, but yet somehow, they assumed there was money and there was a rate of interest and they got these conclusions. Of course, these conclusions could have been much more correct had they been derived in a monetary model. So to avoid this cost, deposit more cash and at shorter time intervals. This is how you reduce the cost of holding money. Use a fund management computer software so that any extra cash can be automatically sent to your account, your time deposit. Physically collect and transport cash to the bank, and that will cost also capital and labor. So such actions would lead to withdrawal of real resources from commodity production to transactions. In other words, we will have lower output and we will have inefficiency. We will have a suboptimal real output equilibrium. So Sam Wilson and Friedman efficiency can be removed can be removed by reducing the rate of interest to zero so that there will be no cost on using. so that there will be no cost on using real balances, but more easily switching to Islamic finance. This is where interest rate or the interest rate is relevant in finance. Of course, assuming that Islamic finance has been properly practiced, which is not. So the second efficiency inefficiency is called Hossius inefficiency. And that relates to, if you used a realistic model with the Arizona debt of money, in other words, the use of money would be justifiable in this model, it would be a model with a positive search cost. Now, if people are price searchers, if people were price searchers, both households and firms, then they would have no knowledge about equilibrium prices, which would be likely, which would be unlikely to exist. We teach in Islamic economics that there is no such a thing as equilibrium prices. John Robinson said that there was no mechanism that would lead to equilibrium. So the concept of equilibrium is one of the faults of new classical economics. They have no guidelines regarding exist for price searching. So since people don't know the equilibrium prices and they have no guidelines to the extent of how much to search, then over searching becomes possible and common. So with no mechanism to sell the extra information, the extra search, over searching would mean more information, but this information cannot be, cannot be searched, cannot be sold. So unsellable information would become an externality, and it would be internalized only if it is sold in the system to somebody else who can use it, but it is not saleable. The commercial banks in the conventional financial system, they focus on financial intermediation between depositors and borrowers. So they are not involved in commodity trading. So they do not collect information about prices of commodities and they do not sell it. The externalities of over searching are not internalized in this system. So households and firms curtail trading to reduce the unusable information. So in order not to collect too much information that one cannot sell, you don't search as much. And the result of that would be that suboptimal volume of trading. And this is the point that was made by Hossius in 1990. So we can say here that the interest-based financial system fails to remedy the Hossius inefficiency, fails to internalize the externality of extra or of over searching. So this is the second inefficiency. Now, Hossius inefficiency can be eliminated by replacing conventional finance with Islamic finance. And I'm talking about proper or properly practiced Islamic finance. If Islamic banks would finance commodities whose costs, whose search cost represents a significant portion of its price. In other words, Islamic banks will not finance the purchase of pizza or hamburger or few kilos of rice, but they would purchase commodities whose search cost represents a significant portion of the price. So price search for their customers, they do it more efficiently because they become information specialists, and search cost would be added to their sale finance price. Yet, of course, they still continue to offer their customers prices for sale finance which are very, I mean, very attractive. So most search costs would be internalized and the volume of trade stays close to optimal. So we can say here and safely, so we can say that the Hossius inefficiency can be removed by the practice of proper Islamic finance. Now, there is this problem that has been ignored by Islamic economists because, you know, we have been born and bred into new classical economics. So none of us questioned the theories of the rate of interest. We have two types of theory. One, proposed by Keynes, liquidity preference, and the other one by new classical loanable fund theories. There is more than one. So these, these theories link the rate of interest in a, with the rates of time preference of commodities in something that appears to be highly intuitive, and we took it as intuitive in our economic studies. But yet after close inspection, it is counterintuitive, and this is, this is the part that we'll talk about here. So each individual has a a time, a rate of time preference for the same commodity, it has a difference. In other words, we do not value time preference or the rate for commodities equally. The urgency of consumption of each commodity is different to each one and also from one person to another. So different individuals have different RTPs, rates of time difference for different commodities. So this seems to be axiomatic, and it does not need any proof. There is no single rate of time preference for intertemporal location of a group of commodities for one individual. In other words, you see the amount of money upon which we impose a rate of interest is actually equivalent to to a group of commodities that I would buy with this money. So the, one individual or even a group of individuals would have no single rate of time preference that summarizes their time preference about the collection of goods. How would you do that? Prices hardly reflect the rates of time preference. For example, pricey items may have lower rates of time preference and vice versa. So the urgency of going from home to the airport in an economy car would be similar to using a luxury car, but using an economy car would be much cheaper. Using a luxury car would be, would be very pricey. So we can see here that commodities can be very expensive, but with a low rate of time preference, and they can be inexpensive but with a high rate of time preference. So if we have, if we assume that the rate of interest is 10%, this is just to illustrate my point. So if the rate of interest is 10%, 10,000 dollars today would be, or now, would be equivalent to 11,000 dollars a year from today, okay, next year. But look, this 10,000 dollars can buy many combinations of goods. For 10,000 dollars, and each combination would have a different weighted average of rate of time preference. If we weighted the rates of time preference by any weight we want, real income or anything else, prices, then we will have a different average weight, average rate of time preference for each, for each combination. They will not be equally rated or ranked on the ladder of time preference. So, and this, any one of these rates will, it would be very, very, very strange or very coincidental that it would be equal to the difference. None of these rates would be equal as expectedly to the rate of interest. So a bunch of cartons that you can fill out with any commodities, and that's what you get. Okay, for every group of commodities, you have a rate of time preference weighted average, and this weighted average would not be equal to the rate of interest. So now also the 11,000 next year would, could buy many combinations of also weighted with a weighted average of RTP. Be using any weights you wish, and it will not be equal to the rate of interest. So you can see here that the rate of interest and money will not possibly represent the time preference on the commodities which money would buy. And of course, each amount of money would buy different combinations of goods, whether they are present goods or future goods. So we can start with this model to look at the formal, formal argument. In commodities, M individuals. So we have a matrix X for all commodities. XiJ, I would be for commodity and J would be for individuals. So this is the commodity matrix in our model. People are mortal and with unpredictable lifespans. So that gives a reason for time preference. So present consumption would be more important, more urgent than future consumption because it's more certain. Household has a set of rates of time preferences. Now, these rates for each commodity XiJ, there is a rate of time preference called Aij. So we have this matrix of of rate of time preference attached to the matrix of commodities. Of course, none of these matrices is a square matrix. Why? And we will use this point later on. Because the number of commodities would most probably exceed many times the number of individuals. So each rate of time preference would be divided by what? We want to define it. So we will find that the rate of time preference is equal Iij, an element of matrix A, would be some units of Xt divided by units of Xt plus one in the future. And this would be expressed in order to facilitate comparison as percentage of the price of Xt. So you can see that the time preference is 5%, 10%, whatever of the price of the commodity. So now, the commodity matrix and the time preference matrix A and the price matrix P would give us the total money spent on commodities at T, and that would be equal to the, our familiar quantity equation. But of course, with no, with no assumptions about velocity and things like that. So the amount of money spent on these commodities would be equal to the matrix, the price matrix times the commodity quantity matrix. So some households now assume that their number H, their number is H, will prefer to, we assume that they would prefer to purchase in the current period against deferred payments using rates of time preference. So the expenditures on consumption or on consumer's goods would be equal to the prices times the amount, the quantities, the prices times the quantities of commodities, and this would be multiplied by one plus the rate of time preference because this is, this is a payment in the future. So we are assuming now here that people, when they accept credit, they consider their own rates of time preference. And the other, the other group of consumers from H plus one to M will pay only the price because they are paying SPOTs. They are, they have SPOT payments. So PiJ times one plus Aij is the deferred price of XiJ. But you see here, there is a, an implicit assumption here that the deferred price is calculated depending on the rate of time preference. Of course, this is not the case in the real world. So equation, the previous equation can be written as this way in matrix four. The matrix of rates of time preference plus one multiplied by, of course, one here would be a scalar matrix, multiplied by P1X, that's the commodities purchased, I mean, the prices of commodities purchased for deferred payment, and P2 would be the price matrix of the commodities purchased for spot prices. Now, we can see that according to new classical economics, this equation would substitute the matrix of rates of time preference would substitute R for the matrix of rate of time preference. So here we ignored or we removed A1, that's the matrix of the rates of time preference, and we substituted by one, one scalar, the interest rate. And we have been for so many years since von Bawerk and since Irving Fisher, we have considered this to be intuitively correct. So that's the problem that we want to attack in new classical economics. So if you want Ac1 to be equal to Ac2, to be equal to Ac two, in other words, if we want to believe the story of New Classical Economics, then we have to equate these two equations. But you can, first of all, you have a difficulty replacing the matrix with a scalar. Of course, you can get the determinant of the matrix, but provided that the matrix is square. But as I told you, the price matrix and the commodity matrix would, would most probably not be not, was most probably not be a, a square matrix. Why? Because the number of commodities will be many times the number of households. So, so the value, so the value, but how, so even if we, if this matrix were square, and even if we had one value to represent it, that's the value of the determinant of the matrix, this, this value will not represent the elements. The elements inside the matrix, which are the rates of time preference for each commodity, cannot be summed up in one scalar or one figure. So it exists only, of course, this value determinant exists for square matrices. Number, but the number of commodities is greater than that of people. So we have here a weighted average scalar which, how about if we, I mean, the, the scalar which is the value of the determinant, which will not exist because of the fact that the matrix is not square? Suppose we used another scalar, the weighted average of the matrix element. Now, this matrix has elements of rates of time preference for each individual and for each commodity. So suppose we made an average, weighted average of these elements of the matrix. It will give us a scalar. Okay? Now, this weighted average of the elements would be totally unrelated to interest. The time, the rate of time preference on commodities does not get into the money market and become a determinant of the rate of interest. So we have here-
Professor Jarri, if we could, Professor Jarri, if you could wrap it up in five minutes?
I'll do my best. So, so here, suppose we can-
Okay, thank you.
Allow for some competitive negotiations between buyers and sellers to set the purchase price for deferred payment. And suppose the price searchers in this competitive search model, in other words, we have now what we call in economics, a competitive search model. And this would be indirect. Now, that would produce a set of markups covering all commodities. So each commodity would have a markup for future payment which would balance the rate of time preference of producers, buyers, and fund providers. So such markup rates would not be representable by one indicator similar to the rate of interest. So the markup on commodity Xi for specific terms of credit would be a function of the buyer, the buyer's rate of time preference, the inventory of the seller, as well as other relevant variables. Now, this is if we wanted to do the, or, or restructure the theory of the rate of interest for New Classical Economics. So such, such a process as a component of sale finance is absent in conventional finance. There is no such thing. Commodity trading is separated from credit. It is suppressed in Islamic finance. Why? How did those geniuses work in Islamic finance and developing licenses through Russes? How did they suppress it? By using labor. So they use labor as a benchmark, and they ignore the search or, or the, the, the, the equilibrating process which would consider the rates of time preference. So, so what we have, the, the, the, if we had identical RTPs, then the social rate of time preference, that's the average of the elements of A, would be equal to the interest rate. That's if what? If we had identical RTPs. Which means, of course, it's reminiscent of the Solon kind mental debro condition for aggregating individual market demand into, individual demand curves into market demand. And that would be that, assuming that an economy with one household and one commodity. So a single rate of interest would be, would represent the rate of time preference only if we had the fulfillment of the SMD condition, which would be a very ridiculous, it's irrelevant, it is trivial aggregation. So the conventional monetary and financial natural system imposes an administrative rate. So the rate of interest is not an equilibrium. It's an administrative rate imposed by the central bank, unrelated to market mechanism producing equilibrium. They claim it is an equilibrium price is baseless. It endangers, I'm sorry for the misspelling here, endangers the economy with policies anchored to a business parameter. In other words, you claim that the rate of interest, equilibrium rate of interest, and you use it as an anchor, and you get the whole economy into trouble because you're having the wrong anchor for your wrong cause. So any claim about the rationality of monetary policy so anchored would be deceptive. Now, the other contribution of analytical Islamic economics is related to the Islamic macro model. And the Islamic macro model, first of all, the revolutionary thing about it, that it is equity based, replaces debt money with equity based money. So we have all money that is being issued is invested and as investment deposits. And the central bank issues central deposit certificates, which would be, I mean, the host proceeds would be added to the central deposits. Money supply managed by adding or retiring CDs. Fine tuning would be through the open market operation in the central deposit certificate markets. And the, both the treasury and the central bank share in setting criteria for allocating CDs among banks and for important economic objectives. And the government would continue to earn seniorage through the modare fees on investment as well as the commission that it takes from holders of, of, of central deposit certificates. The grand sector, Zakha and Awqaf, would support the income redistribution. So the Zakha accounts in banks would be supervised by the National Zakha Commission. And banks receive Zakha and voluntary charity for temporary custody and investment. And Zakha accounts would provide income maintenance for the poor and wealth maintenance through micro projects to the poor. And Awqaf would support education, research, and health. And so we have a grand sector that gradually replaces the government in providing education, health, and poverty alleviation. So, so we can claim that there is a private, we can claim that there is, will be a private, a, a bright future for analytical Islamic economics. And we ask all, all of our colleagues everywhere to join the progressive march or the progressive march on. So analytical Islamic economics has matured in reforming the receive doctrine as a new and growing branch of economics. Contributions to reforming economics and market capitalism will be substantial in this century, Insha Allah. It invalidated the interest rate theory. It warns that as, in using interest as a policy anchor is harmful. Islamic banks' use of labor as benchmark is aggressive. And the switch from debt based equity to equity based money would be, would be, would go a long way in reforming the market economy. So this is the message. Wallahu a'nam. And Allah, God, is the most knowledgeable. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor Jarri. Much appreciated. I know it's a very large area to work with. But I hope our colleagues who are watching currently and who are going to watch later, I'm sure that they will benefit from your presentation. As I mentioned in the beginning, your work is very much the connectivity between the Islamic economics theory and the Islamic finance, making of Islamic finance. And hence, your, your work has been trying to provide that base for Islamic finance rather than just the emergent pattern. If you could stop sharing so that I can start my presentation, perhaps for your lamenting, unfortunately, I will take the debate a bit on to, on to the methodological issues again. But I hope I'm not going to bore you or the listeners. So if you could stop your sharing, please? Yep, thank you. Okay. Okay, as I mentioned, Professor Jarri went into to express a particular issue in Islamic finance through an analytical approach by providing a particular theoretical base. And as a response, perhaps also to the shortcoming of classical or the mainstream economics. And he mentioned also his lamenting, of course, of the reputation on the methodological debate in Islamic economics. But I don't mean to bore him, hopefully. But I feel that there are certain issues, the way we have handled Islamic economics and finance. And therefore, in this session, I'm going to take the narrative or the debate one step back, perhaps, what Professor Jarri has done and to identify the potential issues that we have in terms of developing this authenticity, which was aimed at in initial process. And of course, developments in Islamic finance, despite the political hindrances, has been amazing. We have seen amazing development. But at the same time, the debate has been very much around how much Islamic finance is Islamic. And therefore, quite number of papers have been published on the subject matter. But at the same time, the ordinary public and the Muslim countries has not been convinced on the Islamicity of Islamic finance, one way or another, academically, but at the same time theoretically, but importantly, on the ground, there are issues. And that, those issues mostly related with the consequences that we are aiming to produce or have produced through Islamic finance. And when we compare the consequences that have been produced by the main instrument of Islamic economics narrative, that is Islamic banking and finance, what we see on the instrumentalization of FAK to produce very much the similar outcomes that we see in the conventional sense. Professor Jarri has highlighted how debt free economy or relatively debt free economy can be possible in his presentation. But in the current operation of Islamic finance, what we see very much, unfortunately, a debt based proposition. And therefore, the result has been very much financialization. But at the same time, when we go back to the initial message, it's very much when we look at very much on the development discourse. Perhaps it was aiming to respond to the Weberian, Weberian problematization that Islam is a problematic, Islam is problem, and hindrance is a source of hindrance for economic development. And therefore, the debate initially was very much on the economic development and how Islam will be able to achieve that economic development. And therefore, in the definition, what we've seen on the well being of the stakeholders, all the stakeholders, not only human, but all the stakeholders, how that can be essentialized. And that, that is very much what the Pauline understanding would tell us in terms of rescuing human land, environment, labor, and capital, how they can be rescued from the chains that we have around us. And therefore, a message for an embedded economy, embedded in the value system of Islam, emerged from the value system of Islam and relates to human behavior, which of course are expected to be shaped again within the normative worldview of Islam. And that perhaps brings us to the contention that I have identified, which Professor Sabri Orman also highlighted, whether it is the Islamic economics or the economics of Islam debate. Because these are very much the methodological debates that we have around us. But my understanding of the, of the emergence of Islamic economics moment, I feel very much attached to that moment. And is as in, not only because of the religious appeal, but importantly, an intellectual appeal as a break in the system which has been very much commercializing everything, including human. So suggesting that since 1960s, when we see the emergence of different heterodox schools, but also post-modernity, suggesting that the modernist understanding of economy and society has resulted this catastrophes that we have around us, which has very much enslaved everything in a very narcissistic sense. And therefore, we have to look into how we can develop economics so that it can produce certain positive outcomes that we have around us. And in recent years, what we see around us, the new discourse of STG Sustainable Development Goals as a positive contribution, as an extension of that debate. But of course, it does not also solve the initial equation. That initial equation is very much based on the hegemony of capital. And the same thing, unfortunately, in, after the initial emergence, in particular since 1980s, 90s, our trajectory in Islamic economics and finance has been very much not touching the initial question and how we can build Islamic economics within the existing definition of concepts and paradigms. And that creates the inconsistency. And therefore, the Islamicity question always comes up when it goes to Islamic finance. Because for something to be a paradigm, it has to be consistent with certain theoretical base. And then, therefore, the emergence is an important theoretical framework that we should use to look into. And I'm excited, of course, as I mentioned with Islamic economics moment, or as I call it Islamic moral economy, because I consider it as a counter- because I consider it as a counter hegemony as part of this double movement to develop a very much a stakeholding-centric development with extended stakeholders, so that this rescuing process, rescuing of human, rescuing of environment, labor, and capital, and land can be possible in an embedded sense. And therefore, how that can be developed. And this is very much, the debate goes around what is the objective? And when we look at, of course, the initial definition of Islamic economics would have certain implications. And therefore, certain theoretical paradigm develop out of that in a particular way, as opposed to the Iktisat, that Arabic meaning implies. So you would end up two different processes and two different consequences. In other words, economics suggests a particular process and outcome. However, when you look at in the authentic meaning of Iktisat, it suggests something else. But in the process, what happened, we have taken the definition and consequences of economics. And we have used those definitions with the certain Islamic norms, mainly from Fiqh, and to develop Islamic economics. And that creates a certain inconsistencies that we are facing today. And therefore, I feel that the cognitive knowledge system of Islam, which provides us the base to develop something as an emergence, organic emergence. And that is a different thing than what economics perhaps suggests to us. And therefore, that Iktisati understanding, as I call it Islamic political economy, is important. And that is very much perhaps related with the trajectory of economics as well. Because from relegating from political economy into economics, the economics as it is, as we have today, lost an important chunk of relating to the reality and being the product of the societies in which it's operating. This universality has been imposed since the marginal revolution in the 20th century, relegated the explanatory power of economics, as we have immediately seen in the 1929 economic stipulation. But later, with the Keynesians, we have seen certain corrective mechanism in terms of distribution and correcting the consequences. But after, unfortunately, since 19, mid-1970s, with the Washington consensus, a very much capital-dominated understanding, again imposed as a universal reality in entire world. And therefore, an historical block, because currently, as we see as well today, you have human catastrophes very much produced by health, the pandemic issue that we have around us. But we have global or local or regional financial economic crisis in a chronic manner. So the world has been going through chronic problems, including environmental crisis that is hitting us. And therefore, perhaps, the the solutions that we are producing, rather than being holistic, is very much tackling with certain aspect by not questioning the initial question and correcting from the initial question, but rather moderating the consequences of the outcomes. And therefore, continuously, we see the problems emerging. And for that reason, and therefore, the Gramsciian understanding of the historical block is essential. Therefore, I consider the emergence of Islamic economics as part of that historical block, suggesting that the time has come to a certain level. It is no longer acceptable that the human, land, environment, even capital should be exploited to such level to produce such miseries that we have in front of us. And therefore, we have to go beyond this moderating the consequences of process, but constitute something more essential. Having said that, of course, I'm not opposing SDG's Sustainable Development Goals. But my feeling is that it won't be able to help us to overcome the problem, but it will only defer the problem, unless we tackle the problem at the heart. And therefore, in this presentation, what I taught, I can take you through this theoretical frame, what is called emergence. And through the emergence, we try to understand in order to be considered as an organic emergence, what is necessary. And when we look at, of course, in particular, in the past two decades, two and a half decade, perhaps over 25 years, the notion of emergence has become certain, has received certain attention in different circles. Of course, mostly in the heterodox areas. In the classical, of course, they wouldn't consider emergence as an important theoretical debate. Because for them, the whole homogeneity is the reality. And homogeneity determines what economics is. Therefore, heterogeneous existences or emergences cannot be acceptable by definition. However, within the heterodox tradition, we see emergence has been, has been, has been receiving an important attention. And in this conference, in the initial, yesterday, we had a number of great heterodox school representatives and referring to such institutional as well as heterodox approaches to issues that we are discussing. So therefore, emergence as part of the evolutionary economics and part of the complex system theory, trying to look at a dynamic economic reality and whether the outcomes that we have in front of us, whether they represent, and they represent an organic emergence, something new, or it is just the reputation, one way or another reputation, or the extension of the existing, but it is just a pattern, a different pattern. And therefore, emergence is important for us to consider in this sense. And it is defined as the occurrences when the wholes or the combination of things produce structural or functional effects that are qualitatively different from what the parts can produce alone. And therefore, it's a systemic. And when we look at the Islamic knowledge base, of course, is with the cognitive system of Islamic Islam as a knowledge base, refers very much as structural, okay? And a whole, the Taffidi understanding, the whole complementarity and complementarity and unity suggests a particular structural understanding of the world. In other words, the ontology is entirely different. And therefore, it should expect, or we should expect, whatever the outcomes that we produce from this cognitive base should produce certain outcomes that are different. And when we look at the emergence, the core features of emergence, what we see, for instance, material realization. In the sense that emergence can be realized in physical structures. In other words, it should have some institutional outcomes in our case, in different ways. Coherence, and that's the important part that I have been stressing, that the different parts of whatever we call, when they work together, it should create coherence. It should be consistent with each other in terms of the assumptions, in terms of the appeal, in terms of the consequences that they produce. So when we look at the consequence, we should be able to relate to the beginning of the narrative, the knowledge base, so that we have a coherence. But importantly also, the non-distributivity, which means that the entire pattern possesses at least one systemic property. And in this case, we could suggest that the whole Taffidi understanding suggested everything, one way or another defined within this Taffidi understanding, produce a very systemic outcome. And the structure dependence, which suggests that the systemic properties depend on connective structures. And therefore, when we look at, of course, you have all this different parts of the system, the cognitive system of Islam as a knowledge base, but they are all connected. In other words, the ethical appeal or the Islamic ethics connects them all together so that it generates a structured dependence. So Islamic ethicality, therefore, appeals in the same way in every sphere of life, including economics, including finance, so that a consistent structured dependence can be produced in the end. And hence, again, Taffidi appeals as the unitarity within that. And of course, the genuine novelty suggests that whatever produce, it should have a novel structure, such as what we see, for instance, in Islamic finance, the mimicry, we take a certain products in conventional finance, we use the reverse engineering. And we look at in terms of Fiqh, whether A is selling to B is salam, then we say that is salam. If not, then we try to find solutions for that. Unfortunately, that becomes non-genuine novelty. However, genuine novelty refers that the these features that we have discussed so far to produce certain outcome and novel structure that is qualitatively different from the patterns. So if conventional finance is our pattern, such as home financing, whatever we produce should respond, should demonstrate a novel structure that is different, qualitatively different than what we have in terms of the consequences it produces. And unpredictability in principle, it was suggested the first time appearance of a new type of economic pattern cannot be predicted or logically deduced through a rational procedure. In other words, and therefore, it brings us the importance of using emergence for Islamic economics or Islamic moral economy. Because for the first time, when we look at, we would not know this cognitive knowledge system, what it will produce for us. We wouldn't be able to guess out of our rational procedure. And for that matter, for instance, if I ask the question whether five is bigger than four, the rational understanding would of course tell that, of course, five is bigger. However, if I tell you the question that then you have certain Islamic normative impositions, which suggests that the five includes riba. However, four does not include riba. Of course, as a Muslim, four then becomes much larger for you within this normativeness. And therefore, you cannot rationally deduce such an outcome unless you have this normative base for you, which of course, in our case, Islamic ontology determines. And irreducibility as another factor, which suggests that the systemic properties of the pattern do not follow from the properties of the system components in isolation or in a simpler systems. In other words, when I have a product, a process, whatever economic or finance related, whether it's a banking and finance product or in an economic procedure, when I look at that, when I break it into pieces, deconstruct it, and look at what is in the origin of that, whether I see, for instance, Islam, Islamic normativeness, Islamic ontology, or something else. And therefore, rather than Islamization, but an organic emergence is necessitated with irreducibility. So this is the emergence theories. Emergence as a theoretical framework as part of the evolutionary economics, therefore, provides us a particular theoretical framework to understand the emergences that we have around us, whether they are organic emergences or whether they are just pattern. So when we go through those processes and when we subject the Islamic knowledge or the Islamic economics knowledge that has been developed so far, unfortunately, what we see not necessarily an authentic or organic base that we have developed. Of course, there are reasons for that. And which are, which some of them are very much the imposition of the global political economy that we have around us. But there are different schools of thoughts that have emerged within Islamic economics, which would perceive the problematization that we have put forward in different ways. As in an interview to understand the Islamic emergence of Islamic economics, we ten contenders, when we conducted an interview, out of his disappointment, he posed us the alternative question. They said that we have always identified that Islam is a solution, but we haven't identified what was the problem. So that's a particular ways of looking, particular way of looking at the reality. But on the other hand, I feel that in order to be able to constitute a better future, we should be able to go back and rather than moderating the consequences of the existing, we have to look into how perhaps authentic emergence can be possible. And therefore, when we look at why that authentic emergence or is not emerging, is very much the different schools of thoughts that we have around us. And we have realists or the formalist. They would consider the reality and in a way responding to the Weberian problem of Islam is hindering economic development. They would say that, no, Islam doesn't have any problem with accumulation. And therefore, the Fiqh is here, as you can see how it is working. Or the historical school, which looks at the historical institutionalization. And therefore, very much squeeze our understanding of economics into the historical institutionalization. And unfortunately, within this understanding, Waqf and Zakat becomes a source, only source of responding to social development. But the capital accumulation of the current times is not considered as an issue to be concerned with. Behavioralist, however, among us, behavioralist colleagues very much considers economy as everydayness. And it is only certain normative injunctions from Islam which makes a distinction between one person and other. Otherwise, economics, economy is economy. However, there are the essentialist or substantiveist, I consider myself part of that school, who consider the importance of the organic emergence and how organic emergence is important in order to be able to respond to the challenges that we have around us. And therefore, each one of these particular methodological positions has implications and consequences to the reality that we have today as a problem in front of us. And therefore, the main and hegemonic, hegemonic methodological position around us has been the realist or the Füki position, which does not have any problem of redefining concepts or going back one stage and redefine what it is. For instance, when we talk about riba, riba directly relates capital. Either as a substantive school, I should define what capital is and therefore, generate an understanding of a riba-free economic outcome. Or I would just take the definition of capital from the Neiklassik and generate structures in a very mimicry way and then produce the hybridity in the end. But the irreducibility of emergence or the genuine novelty and all those features, when we look at the outcome.
Excuse me, Professor Muhammad. Excuse me, we have a problem of time. As like we are almost about past our time that we put it for your session. Please, please, could you try to sum up within five minutes, please?
Okay, I'll try. That's okay. So therefore, when we look at from that perspective, when we look at the emergence.